Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, February 13th meeting to order. And I would ask you all to please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening, we'll have Director Jessie Knight read the mission statement, please.
The Waterloo School community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Jessie. Now we'll begin our agenda items with Exhibit A, and this is a new partnership recognition with Becker Elementary. And we have Kelly Martin is here, and we will introduce Kelly this evening. And do we have anyone from Becker here? Yes, awesome. If you two would come forward, and is Aqui here? No.
Do we go down there?
Yeah, yeah, yep. So we'll begin. If you ladies want to just hang on for a second, we're going to introduce Kelly Martin, and then we will proceed. Dr. Smith will do the introduction.
I'm not used to being down here. So I'm super excited. I don't know if you've actually had a chance to introduce Kelly to the board here yet or not. We've talked a lot about the position, but Kelly is our new strategic partnership coordinator, and he's jumped right in and done some amazing things. I think you're going to see some of the new partnerships that he's formed this evening. But I think a lot of us remember that role that we had a handful of years ago. Crystal Buzz is the name that comes to mind, and when I was Assistant Principal at East, Crystal would kind of just, if there was a partnership that had to happen between the schools and a community partner, she would have her hands kind of come in and kind of bridge that gap. That was the vision we had for this position. We've been working on this position, quite honestly, for quite some time, trying to find the right person. And when Kelly reached out, expressed his interest, came and interviewed, it was a no-brainer. And he's been here since January 3rd, and already it's been paying dividends. Everything I've been hearing is that Kelly's been doing an outstanding job. And tonight, we're going to see, I think, one or a couple of the new partnerships that have been formed. So I just want to say thanks to Kelly. Thanks to the board for supporting that new position, newer position. It's supporting the WCC, but also just our overall plan for connecting, bridging the community and the district. So let's give Kelly a round of applause real quick for the work he's doing. With that being said, I'll hand it over to you. Okay? Sound good? All right, ma'am.
Good evening, good afternoon, Board. Thank you for having me here today.
I'd ask Becker to come up. Do you have somebody here for surgery? Would you like to come join us, please?
And Pam Arndorf will take some pictures, and then we can hear from the partners if we'd like, and the Becker staff.
Do you want to take pictures now? All right. I'll introduce Becker first. We actually have Abby, who is the lead teacher for Becker, and then Randy, who is actually principal. And I'll let them speak on behalf of their school and partner.
Randy's making me talk. She's my boss, though, so I'll do it. So we have been here quite a bit. We're just kind of renovating our partners and ed, and really our vision with how our community at Becker can be improved by working with our greater community around us. I happen to also be related to Allison, who works at the Surgery Center. And when I told her, like, oh, yeah, we're just kind of redoing things. We want people in different areas connected with us. She was like, well, I don't think we're partners and ed with anyone. So I was like, let me tell you more. And here we are. So we're super happy to be partnering with them and bringing kind of that medical side as maybe an opportunity for our students or staff and learning more and growing. So super happy to have them here tonight.
Awesome. And if you ladies would like to introduce yourself, and what you're most excited about the partnership.
My name is Allison Lundey, and I am the Director of Nursing at the Surgery Center at United Medical Park. And my interest of building a relationship with the Waterloo Schools is because I got my start. I was one of the first CNA classes when East High started offering CNA. I didn't even know what a nurse was. I had no idea about medical field, and I did my CNA class, and I said this was it. Medical field was what I needed to be doing for the rest of my life. And so having a partnership to possibly be able to introduce kids at a younger age and build the relationship with Waterloo School District on what their future can hold, keeping them here in our community and retaining them for possible opportunities at the Surgery Center when they become an adult, we would love to have that, so.
Awesome. Great.
Anybody who wants to can pull the mic down. You don't have to stand on your tiptoes.
Good evening. My name's Jean Furman. I'm the CEO of the Surgery Center. That's a hard act to follow because everything that Allison said is exactly what I was going to say, in maybe a little different words. But we feel aligned. We feel that we have to be part of the solution to our healthcare workforce issue that we have right now. And I feel the younger we can go, the better, and the repeated exposure. And so I am very, very excited about this opportunity to partner with Becker. Our board at the Surgery Center was also very much in favor of this, and we just are excited about where it could lead us in the future, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you and see lots of multiple opportunities that could be beneficial for both sides, so thank you.
I think it's a perfect fit because, you know, we have a pretty robust career health program right now, but given your expertise, feedback is going to be very important to us. So we'll be looking forward to any suggestions you have to make it better than it already is, so.
And I'd just like to interject. I was going to go there with her. I'm going to talk to you later, because I'd like to invite you to the WCC just to be a speaker for our health and career fair, if possible.
Already kind of involved in that. It's pretty cool, and lots of wheels turning also.
Thank you. I'm not going to steal them.
And Ms. Arndorf will get a picture of all of you if you'd so oblige us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very, very much. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming tonight. Super. Now, our next exhibit is also a new at-large partnership recognition, so this is at-large, and we'll have Kelly discuss that. But Waterloo Schools is pleased to welcome Cadillac XBC and Maple Lanes as at-large partners with the district. So if we have representatives from Cadillac, to please come forward. And we're excited about the bowling opportunity. Go ahead, Mr. Martin.
So I'm going to, Becker, you heard them say I stole someone from them. Actually, I did steal Cadillac from them. Myself and Ryan actually were having bowling one night and had a conversation. I was like, well, why don't we just go partner at large? Because I know East High uses Cadillac lanes and West High uses Maple lanes. And so since most of our elementary and middle schools are feeder schools to those two schools, why wouldn't we just make the two partner at large? So we talked about it. We've sent emails back and forth, and then Ryan was like, okay, let's do it. So I'll give you Ryan.
Well, it's kind of deja vu, because it was just a couple months ago. I was here.
Could you introduce yourself?
Yes.
You say?
Excuse me. Ryan Wilson, representing Maple Lanes and Cadillac XBC. And yes, I was just here a couple months ago, because Maple became partners with Becker. So that's what I'm saying. It's kind of deja vu. It's happening again. But I think this is terrific, because I'm pretty sure Cadillac was already partners with Lowell. We had another school reach out to be partners with us. And then after talking with Kelly, we were just thinking, hey, isn't there a way to kind of include everybody? Because otherwise, we'll just keep doing this every couple of months. So this makes perfect sense, just to be able to, you know, be the two premier venues for entertainment in Waterloo and involve all the schools. And then, as Kelly said, just to kind of have our feeder programs for high school bowling and whatnot, you know, it just makes sense. We're having a high school state that's being hosted here in Waterloo next week, actually. So Maple is hosting singles, and then the team event will be over at Cadillac. So we're gearing up for that, and we're very excited.
Is this our first at-large?
No.
No?
Pam shaking her head, no.
Okay, okay. Thanks. I didn't know that.
And do you need any volunteers for the state bowling? If you do, we can get that word out there, too.
As far as I know, we're taken care of, but that's good to know. I'll make sure that I follow up with that if we do.
Perfect. Well, we're excited for this partnership, too, and it's great, because it also, we have the opportunity of introducing bowling at a younger age to kids. I remember when my kids were little, there was a bowling bus, and they'd come and pick up the kids from elementary, and they'd go bowling after school. And that was a cool activity that my kids really partook in and enjoyed, so we appreciate it. So we'll have Pam. Well, go ahead, Mel.
I should know this, but I don't. Do we have organized middle school bowling?
So that's kind of a, it's a program that does exist throughout the state of Iowa. It's, we've done it here, but it just hasn't really aligned with the way the program has ran with other communities. But we do have it in position, and I know that our youth director, Angie Erickson, is a, she's definitely trying to get it together again so that we can have that, because it's just an advantage for the high school programs to have the middle school bowlers have that experience. So it's definitely something that we're pushing for, that's for sure.
Yeah, and for sure have her contact Dan Huff, and that would be a good coordinated effort.
Great start to the at-large partnership.
So I take it that's, we have the board's approval on that?
Well, we have to go to a vote, but good try. Thank you so much. Ms. Arndorf will get your picture. And they won't forget about Becker, I promise.
Yeah, we're still closest proximity, at least Maple is, so I'll see your plenty.
Yeah. Thank you again very much. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is information from individuals and delegations. So before I read our entire caveat, is there anyone here that would like to approach the board on an item that's on agenda, not agenda? We didn't have anyone register, correct? So you're able to speak, even if you didn't. So is there anybody that wants to speak? Okay. With that being said, I will not go through our whole paragraph of information. So next, we will move on to our consent agenda. And tonight, that consists of six items. Item C, which is the minutes of the January 23rd regular board meeting and the January 25th, 2023 special board meeting. Item D, personal appointments and adjustments. Item E, the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings. Item F, setting the date of a public hearing for the 23-24 school district calendar. Item G, which is the central middle school remodel, Waterloo Career Center Expansion Project Change Order Number Nine. And item H, the adjusted 22-23 board meeting dates. Are there any items on the consent agenda board members would like to have removed?
Item G, golf, please.
Item I, the ice cream?
I is not on the consent agenda. Sorry. So.
Sorry.
And I would like item F. So anybody else?
Thanks.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of approving items C, D, E, and H as stated, please state aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, sorry. Yeah. Can we have a motion to approve items C, D, E, H, please?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. So now we will move on to item F, which is setting the date of the public hearing for the 23-24 school district calendar. And basically, let's see. Okay. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the date of September 27th, 2023 at 5:00 PM, or February 27th, 2023 at 5:00 PM to hold the public hearing for the 23-24 school district calendar.
So approved.
Okay.
So moved.
And a second. And what I was wondering, Anthony, on that is, could you kind of explain the process of the calendar committee, and who's involved with that, and just how we derive at the calendar dates, and Dr. Mohren, too, whoever is.
Yeah, I'm going to pass it to her, because she sat on the calendar committee, and I did not.
All right.
You might be able to jump in a few. I know that your office, I think Evan, put out to all, from all groups, so it would be teachers, paraeducators, our Ask Me group, an email asking who was interested. And I believe that everyone that was interested in serving on the committee was able to. So the calendar committee is usually the largest. I think we had 20, between 20 and 25 people. And we did, we do all virtual, like we've done in the past. And we've just talked about, you know, here are some things. For example, we cannot start before the 23rd, so that's a non-negotiable, not for us to talk about, because we can't. Just some other things. And so, and we had somebody take notes, and there were some suggestions. Some of them were super out of the box. Some of them were, hey, I think this date might be wrong, you know, just little things like that. And so we took the notes, and then we passed them on, as I think both committees do, to Dr. Smith, to see if he wants to make any big or small changes. Last year, we made some more overall changes, so this year, there just weren't that many suggestions. But everyone has input. We take notes from everyone that's there, and we write down or capture everything that everyone said, even if it's way out of the box, to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. Anything else, I think.
Great. Were the representatives at all levels, elementary, middle, and high, or?
Yes, for sure. Yep.
Great.
Yep.
All right. I just thought it'd be interesting to let the public know how we derive at that. It isn't just we.
This is about year three or four, we've done the committees, and I think it's worked really well. And going virtual, we've had a lot more participation, so that's why we've stuck with doing the meeting virtually.
Perfect. Well, thank you for your leadership on that.
Yeah. Is there usually much discussion or varying opinions on which days should be professional development days? Or is that kind of?
Do you mean like the Mondays or Fridays?
Well, or which ones? Yeah, specific.
This year, none.
Okay.
In the past, yes, lots. About two, three years ago, there was lots of discussion, but this year just happened to be, that wasn't one of the things.
Do you ever get feedback from the community? I'm sorry if I missed that.
That is, I don't think we had any community members on our, on our committee.
Okay.
Because I think it's just internal, all staff. I believe so. I do know that at the, before it's, I do know that we share with, like, the chamber and different people afterwards, checking dates, is there anything we missed, or anything like that? I know that's been something that has always been done.
Okay.
And is it ever brought up to, like, not have a spring break? I just wondered if that was.
If I'm being totally honest, usually one person brings it up, and everybody else groans and says, no way. But somebody usually brings up, hey, I know in some communities, they do, like, Easter Monday, or, you know, just those types of things.
Right.
But it's usually just one person in the group that says something, and the others say, no way. Now, that could change someday. It's just where we're at right now.
Perfect. Well, thank you for getting all that input, too. I mean, it's an opportunity to have the voices heard, and, you know, you can be part of it if you want to.
Right. Absolutely.
Perfect. All right, that's all I wanted. So all in favor of setting the date of February 27th to hold the public hearing for 23-24, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye, five zero. Thank you very much. Dr. Mohren, I appreciate that. The next item is item G, and that is, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve Central Middle School Remodel, Waterloo Career Center Expansion Project Change Order Number Nine, as presented as an add of $16,770.18.
So moved.
Second.
And I see we have Kate Payne from the architectural firm here to come up for questions. So Lyle, I think you pulled that.
Yep. Hi, folks.
Hello. So Zach pretty much explained the details on this particular change order, but just roughly speaking, where do we stand in terms of consuming the contingencies that we allowed for to begin with?
I have a piece of paper. Give me a half a second. I didn't pull it out.
It doesn't seem like we've had a lot of changes, but maybe I missed some.
So we have had nine change orders on the project. And right now, there, so there are two sets of allowances in the project. There are allowances that are about things changed during construction, and then there are allowances in the project that are meant specifically for vendor-based things that we needed to wait to understand. So after this change order, there is still $65,769 in remaining allowance for changes during construction, and we are more than 57% through the project, because the WCCX piece is done, and we're cranking through the CMS piece of the puzzle. So we've spent roughly half of the allowance, of the change allowances in the project. We asked that you guys hold a contingency of 5%. I don't actually know to what extent you do that. We also have contingency protected for some vendor-based things, like I mentioned. So remaining in those allowances, there's still $80,000 of costs of dollars protected for those things. And then, so combined, if you take those two things, there's still $146,000 in allowance money that has not yet been touched. Some of them are designated by category, but in the end, it's dollars.
So you say you're 57% through the, that's the combined project?
Yeah, the combined construction schedule.
In terms of central middle school, usually discover things during the demolition, I'm assuming, more than the construction. So where are we at? I mean, are we kind of?
So demolition is probably 95% complete.
So can I assume we've discovered a majority of things that are usually hidden?
There are, I can tell you that there are a couple of things coming down the pike, yes, that are not in, you're probably not aware of yet. And so those things have to do with some pipe trenches that are in the west end of the central middle school area.
Okay.
That are going to trigger some flooring changes because of the way that those pipe trenches have covers on them, and they had asbestos-laden glue underneath them that had to be abated. And it gets complicated in a hurry, but it has, the fix is going to be rather expensive. And I don't have the final costs on that yet.
Okay.
So that's the big one that's coming down the pike. There's also a couple of, there's a column and a couple of steel beams that needed to be added because of the way the precast was bearing. That was a surprise when we demolished, during demolition. There are a couple of big ones coming down the pike.
Okay.
And just remind the public, expect, sorry.
Voice is coming from here, but you're talking over there.
Yeah. The expected date of finish.
There's no change in the schedule right now. The expected date of completion for the central middle school piece is December of 2023. Kids will then be able to move back in. And then the demolition of the temporary classrooms will happen in January of 2024.
Okay. Thank you.
On the whole, the project's performing very well in terms of costs. We're under 1% in changes completely, which is really good. And the other thing that is important to know is that, at this point, although we don't have the final report from the geothermal well test, the project held a alternate to do a geothermal, second geothermal reinjection well, that right now, all tests are showing that that won't be needed.
It will be, will be needed?
Will not be needed, which means that you'll get that credited back to the project at the end. And that's over $200,000.
Okay.
Awesome. And just a reminder to the board that we have it in our minutes, but, you know, we, they do not, she said nine change orders, but if it's not over $5,000, it doesn't have to come to the board for a change order, so.
It doesn't have to come to the board, but there have been those change orders, yes.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm just reminding the board that, because when, nine orders, we were like nine, but if they were under $5,000, that was not necessary. But I honestly think the numbers you're presenting is actually, we were talking a little bit before, Jessie and I, that, you know, when you dig into an older school building like Central Middle School is, you don't know what you're going to find.
Absolutely.
You know? And so this is actually, I think, a positive, that we haven't been way over budget or lots of change orders, because when you're in an old system, it's hard to make it new, so.
We're tracking under 1% right now, which is really good, because usually, we expect and kind of plan for something in the over 2% with renovation. But this is kind of 50-50 project with new construction and renovation.
Right.
And we're doing really well.
And I would say that I really appreciate the staying on schedule, because our students and staff are enduring a lot at Central with the temporary classrooms, and so if we can stay right on that schedule, I think that's commendable, so, yeah.
I will say Larson Construction is doing everything they can to stay on schedule, and we're trying really hard to keep it going.
Please thank them from us, and publicly, we thank Larson, so.
Great.
Okay. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. So all in favor of taking the change order as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you so much. That's an exciting project. We're all looking forward to the completion. The next item is Exhibit I. This is an exciting item. It's the West and East High BPA Nationals Trip to Anaheim, California. And we have students here tonight, which is one of my favorite parts of board meetings. And we have Devin Winters here, the West High BPA advisor. And I will get the motion on the table, please. It's the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education approve travel for East and West High Schools BPA students to Anaheim, California. to Anaheim, California from April twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to attend the BPA National Leadership Conference.
Still moved.
And just to start out, BPA stands for?
Business Professionals of America.
Perfect. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, as you know, I'm Devon Winters and I have two other advisors with me, Cindy Zook and Sarah Levenduski. And this is just a few of our students. The rest like had to work or had other commitments tonight, so they couldn't be here. But I'm gonna let each student talk a little bit about it, cause it's just such a great experience and I think I'll just bring a couple up.
I'm Cheyenne White. I am a sophomore at Waterloo East High School. I am competing in Advanced Office Systems and Procedures and Intermediate Word Processing at State, hoping to qualify for Nationals a second time.
She went last year.
Remember, you guys can pull the mic down so we can hear you better.
Hi, my name's Madison Hanson. I am a junior at East High. I am competing in Human Resources and Health Administration Leadership for State, and I am hoping to qualify for Nationals.
Hello, I'm a sophomore. My name is Taylor Hofftender from Waterloo East High. I'm competing in Intermediate Word Processing and Advanced Office Systems and Procedures at State in hopes to qualify for Nationals.
Hello, my name's Sophia Samler. I am freshman at Waterloo West. I'm competing in Presentation Individual as well as Presentation Team, and I will be doing Human Resources as well. I'm also running for BPA State Officer, so I'm looking forward to being a candidate for that.
Hi, my name is Deja Jones. I am a senior at Waterloo West High School. Competitions I compete for is Fundamentals Word Processing and then Fundamental Word Processing Competition as a group. And then the last one is HR Management.
Hi, I'm April Mo, and I'm a senior at West High School. And the competitions that I am competing for is the Human Resources one and the Prepared Individual Speech.
Awesome. And participated last year. It sounds like a couple of you are, awesome, yeah.
Got a couple that aren't here that did participate last year also.
Yeah. What was your favorite part last year for you two?
One of my favorite parts was being able to meet a lot of different people from all around Iowa. And even at Nationals, I got to meet people from all over the country.
Awesome.
Me too. Um, I got to talk to a lot of people. We got to, um, just connect to everybody in all sorts of ways by having fun and learning all at the same time.
Yes, students, the, the reasons that we like to see all kinds of students go on this trip is because we want to put you in a different culture. Sometimes here in our culture, we get in and, oh, well, the student next to me is just doing this and Cedar Falls, they're this good. And I want you to see, we want you to see the national best and learn how to strive for the national best before you leave uh, high school here and have a different mindset and a different way of thinking about achievement. So that's why it's really important and that's why I thank your teachers so much for putting this together. Doing this is a lot of hours of preparation and of course, the, the time that they're gonna take you. And writing an itinerary like I see here is an incredible amount of work. So make sure to thank your teachers and we, uh, uh, maybe some of the other board members have things to say, but we thank you for stepping up and learning and competing and being brave and, um, taking a trip to another part of the world to, to test your skills. Thank you so much for doing that.
Sheriff, I love you mentioned HR. Could you go into, why don't you go into a little more detail on what the competition looks like?
Okay, so HR is Human Resource Management. Basically, they, we will come up, um, we will read a scenario, um, on a packet and we will have to just go straight to the point, like identify the topic, explain the, uh, problem, and then explain how we can fix the problem. And then also mention, um, how we can, uh, mention the manual, so like, hey, our manual says this. Or hey, we can change this problem later on in the future by doing A or B, just like that.
So they just give you a problem that you're not aware of previously? It's just kinda spontaneous?
Yes.
They have twenty minutes to prepare once they're there.
Okay.
So they're given this scenario, just like Deja said, and then they go through and they look at their manual that they're given, like a company handbook.
Yeah.
And then they figure out, just like she said, like she took the three steps. I was so proud. I'm like, there's the three steps, there it is. So they do those things and then they like decide, how are we gonna change this manual to make it a better manual? So that if situations like this happen in the future, how does it change?
So is this a team effort or an individual effort?
Individual.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So Deja, what do you plan on doing after you graduate?
I plan on attending the University of Texas Southern to study health and nutrition and possibly become a sports trainer.
Okay. And you are also a senior?
Yes.
No, anybody else a senior? Yeah, yeah. What's your plans after school?
I don't know yet, but probably something like you.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
This competition is great because in the business world, when you guys get there, if you're hired for a position, there's nobody to solve the problem but you. It's your job to solve the problems and you can't just let some, let it go by or let someone else solve the problem. You have to step forward. You have to take the bull by the horns and you have to solve problems in the business world. So I love seeing what this program is doing for you.
And I really like, I can say a lot of our competitions are that way because even if you're given a document in some of the word processing and some of the computer ones, you're given a scenario and create this. Well, if you don't know how to create it, you gotta think creatively. How can I create it to make it look like what it's supposed to, so I can still do well? And so it's amazing to see these kids and what they go through to make those better, you know, great experience, great.
So how many students are in BPA in each, uh, each school?
Well, go ahead Cindy, yeah.
At East this year, we have six members. We only had three last year, so we almost doubled it this year, so.
Alright.
We're typically around thirty, and so every year kind of fluctuate around there. So we're getting, not taking quite that many to State, but we're hoping to get most of them to Nationals, so.
So is there, is this part of the curriculum or is this extracurricular?
Technically, CTSOs, Career and Technical Student Organizations are supposed to be part of your curriculum. We're all business teachers, so what we do is we integrate this into our classrooms. So in the future, you guys are gonna learn more about CTSOs and, um, they will be like a health, those HOSA, which will be a health organization. We're gonna have FCC LA. We will have Skills USA, which I used to run before and have brought kids to Nationals from that one before, if you remember. Um, we will be running those chapters in the future as well. So all these organizations have national competitions that you can go to, but they are all dedicated to specific like areas. What I like about BPA is it covers, I think everything's a business. So I think whatever you learn, even like Deja, if she's going into the medical field, she could go into HR after she goes, you know, in the ranks of the medical field, she could go up into HR and hiring all those health people, you know, things like that. So I think all these contests really do such a great job. So, did I answer your question? I kinda got sidetracked, so.
If you ever become managers in business, understand that you do need to know how the, to do the jobs of your people, um, from the bottom up. So that's a great way to start. I'm so proud of you guys. Thank you.
Do you have any male students in it this year? I know previously we have had.
Yeah, we do. They're just not here tonight, so.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Well, I thank you all and, and the advisors for, um, taking the extra time out it takes to do this. But I'm sure these experience and opportunities for lots of these kids are maybe the first time they have flown, the first time they, a lot of firsts. And so, um, I appreciate you spending your extra energies and time away from your families to, to help these guys because, um, it looks like these, um, six young, well, five young, six young ladies here all, all did an excellent job. Seven, six, seven, six, four, five, six.
You could count us as a.
Two teachers.
Yeah.
Two teacher, yeah, two teachers, six students.
Six students.
But you all did it, you all did an awesome job of speaking and presenting to us. And just remember that you are the best and you're representing West and East Waterloo, and we appreciate that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So. Yeah, all in favor of, um, approving this trip? And also, we would like you guys to come back and tell us how you did. We'd love to know the results, so. All in favor of approving this, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Our next item on our agenda is Exhibit J, and it's the Network Equipment Purchase. And we have Mr. Matt O'Brien coming forward. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of network equipment from Goldfield Telecom LC at a total cost of four hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. And wireless network equipment and services, services from Air Corps Wireless at a total cost of a hundred and seventy-two, six ninety-eight and ninety-five cents, subject to being approved for the majority of the E-Rate funds the district will apply for.
Still moved.
Second.
And Mr. O'Brien, please.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Our veteran board members are probably used to me coming to you around this time of the year, pretty much every year with some sort of item that has to do with E-Rate. So here I am for this year's E-Rate purchase. The E-Rate program is a federal program, uh, that the FCC administers, which allows schools to apply for funding to help us pay for internet access as well as network equipment to, uh, run our high-speed networks in our, in our school system. So anytime that we're looking at making network upgrades, we do that, uh, in accordance with the rules of the E-Rate program uh, and try to leverage that to its maximum extent possible. So we have a lot of network equipment in the Waterloo schools, both wired and wireless network equipment that, that powers all of our, um, well over ten thousand devices. Obviously, all of those need network connections. So we have a lifecycle replacement cycle, so every year we have a chunk of our network that we replace. Again, we do that through the E-Rate process and attempt to leverage E-Rate funds to, to pay for that. So ultimately, assuming we're successful in obtaining E-Rate funds, then we actually pay for a small portion of the costs that you just read that is part of the motion. The way the E-Rate program works is a little drawn out in terms of funding. So this purchase will actually, pending your approval, uh, be made next fiscal year, but I need to come to you now for approval so that then I can file for E-Rate funds. It then takes several months for that application to be reviewed and ultimately then we would hope to get approval sometime over the summer or fall to then be able to order the equipment that you would actually be approving of tonight. So again, that would make it part of, uh, next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four's budget. So this year's pro, uh, proposal in front of you includes both wired and wireless network equipment to replace the, both wired and wireless networks at Carver, Central, Cunningham, Highland, Kingsley and Lincoln, as well as a few selected components at a few other places as well. Uh, and the proposal also includes, uh, what are called wireless controllers. Ours in the district are gonna be on nine years old now, which is, um, at or past their expected lifespan. So the wireless controllers are kind of the brains of the wireless system that all of our access points communicate with and talk to. So, um, that's also part of the proposal in front of you tonight is to, uh, replace those which are due for replacement. So total numbers, uh, you kind of read what that breaks down with the two winning vendors. But I would just note, and this is, it says this in the exhibit as well, that the maximum amount of E-Rate funds that will be eligible for is just over five hundred thousand dollars, about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I put a little asterisk by that. That can, the amount that we actually get approved for can vary because sometimes the E-Rate program gets really picky and there'll be like a certain SKU number that they'll say is not eligible or only partially eligible. So that's why I always have the motion say, uh, subject to being approved for the majority of the E-Rate funds which we apply for, just because we apply for the maximum and expect for a small portion of that potentially to, uh, through the review process get struck down and then hopefully still get the majority of funds which we apply for. So with that said, we'd be getting a little over six hundred grand worth of equipment. An estimated cost of the district would be then under a hundred thousand dollars with, um, E-Rate then hopefully paying around half a million dollars of, of that, of that purchase.
Does the E-Rate, um, historically, is it staying pretty stable? Or what are the variables that change the amount of the E-Rate that we get?
So there's a couple, three, three pieces to that, um, well, four really. So there's, there's Category One and Category Two funding. Category One is for internet access. I typically will bring an E, um, an E-Rate internet contract to you, but we're actually on multi-year contracts. This is kind of our off year. So next year we'll have another one of those contracts. Equipment is Category Two. Um, Category Two, it's really based off of a couple of things. Right now, the E-Rate, we're in the middle. This is, this is year three of a five-year program where they have based the maximum amount of money that districts are eligible for of non-discounted, meaning like the total cost. So in our case, the six hundred grand figure of equipment based off of enrollment. So for our district, that eligible, eligibility in terms of non-discounted amount for the five-year program, the maximum amount that if we're successful in getting funding that we could actually get is a little north of one point five million dollars across the five-year program for Category Two equipment. And then the discounted portion is actually based off of free and reduced, which gets a little complicated since we're a CEP district. But, um, right now, we're actually in the highest band. There's urban enroller, so we're in the highest band for, uh, urban districts, which has to split at approximately eighty-five fifteen. So E-Rate would then pay of the non-discounted amount, we can apply for eligible equipment to be eighty-five percent reimbursed through E-Rate, fifteen percent of which then the cost is ours. Maybe more information than you wanted.
No, that's good. Thank you, Matt.
So do we not, ever not get approved? I mean, are we always successful in some type of way?
Um, knock on wood. I have recently, since I've been doing it, I have been successful. Denials absolutely do happen for various reasons, which is, again, knock on wood. But thus far, particularly with, um, in recent years, we have been successful in at least getting the majority of funds which we have applied for.
Also, real quick, um, so I noticed that we have Carver, Central, Cunningham, Highland and Kingsley, so, and we're on a cycle. So is it always nine, nine years? Like when will the other schools come up with theirs?
Sure. So we do have a five-year plan, but we review it annually. We typically replace network equipment between five and seven years. It varies depending on whether we're actually talking about wired versus wireless equipment. Uh, equipment life cycles also vary. New standards also obviously come out. So, you know, we kind of project out a five to seven-year plan. But every year, we sit down and kind of review where we're at with, with that year. This is actually one, probably the largest package that I've brought to you. Um, and that has to do with just some decisions we made to replace whole networks as opposed to components of networks, as well as, um, certain switches in these buildings are becoming end of life, um, meaning we can no longer get replacements. There will no longer be updates, et cetera. Um, that's happening in another year and a half, so we wanted to start moving on, uh, those replacements as well.
Is, is the central update independent to our Career Center project?
So the central update is actually for the main portion, most of the main portion of central. We've actually replaced their core network, but it'll be the rest of all of the, the wired network within the currently being remodeled central portion. So last year, we actually took, uh, a package to you that included the WCCX portion, which is what Central is currently using in their temporary location. Then the central location will, uh, that's part of this year's package will be part of the remodel.
Part of the remodel.
Yeah, we, we used to actually include that as part of the bid-out package. And honestly, that, that was the historic past practice that we stopped because this saves us quite a bit of money to pull that out of the package, one, just so we're not paying overhead of the contractors to then order the equipment anyway. And then two, so we're able to leverage the E-Rate process for it.
So some of these buildings, Cunningham is like, I don't know, twenty-two years old maybe. You happen to know off the top of your head, is this like the third iteration or?
Um, this, I think you're right. I think this would be the third iteration for Cunningham. I can tell you that the equipment, the majority of the equipment that we're replacing in Cunningham was purchased either, again, we didn't do the whole network before, so depending on the partial, the portion of the equipment that we're talking about is different years. But, um, the core, we replaced core network in twenty-seventeen last. The, the edge network and wireless access points were twenty-nineteen. Which those seem less than the years that I said when we typically replace five to seven years. I will say, keep in mind the duration of the E-Rate process, you know, we don't actually expect to be rolling out this equipment for another year. So that's gonna put us, um, well into twenty-twenty-four. We always have to really plan ahead just because of how long and drawn out the E-Rate process is. So, um, that's why you're seeing some of those more recent dates that we're still taking before you. So that's why you're seeing some of those more recent dates that we're still taking before you.
And is there still a, a trend to go from wired to wireless? Or are we kind of done with that?
There, that is absolutely, I would say, a trend in terms of where we're at as a district. We, we are very much, the vast majority of our devices are connected wireless now, which is absolutely a change from five years ago. In fact, when we designed, like, when we worked with Modus and Envision to design central and WCC, even with labs, we used to design labs so that we would have one network, wired network drop per device. And now, when we design rooms, we really design them for flexibility just because there are devices like printers and phones and other like, certain IOT devices that get what's called POE or Power Over Ethernet. They get power through that same cable. Those devices are still plugged in, so they still need a wired drop. But the vast majority of devices that students and staff use are connected wirelessly.
Does that increase vulnerability, you know?
Um. Potentially, a little bit. I mean, each has a separate set of challenges and considerations. So we, we look at both of those. Our, we have separate wireless networks for different types of devices. So the guest network, for example, that anyone can just hop on, is firewalled off from the rest of our networks. Similarly, we have a staff BYOD network, which is actually encrypted, where staff can bring in their own devices. But that is also firewalled off from district devices and through some other security initiatives, which the board is aware of. We're actually working to further kind of segment those, those wireless networks as well.
Great. Thank you. You always explain things so much easier that we can understand. I really appreciate your putting it in terms of the common person. I consider myself.
If I use jargon, I try to at least define what the jargon is. People love jargon, but.
Yes, true. Okay, any other questions for Matt, anybody? All right, all in favor of approving the E-Rate funds the district apply? State aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, five zero. Thank you so much, Matt.
Thanks much.
Appreciate it. Our next item is Exhibit K, and that is purchase of cardio equipment for East and West High Schools. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from the Facilities Committee and approve the purchase of cardio equipment for East High and West High at a total cost of $162,144, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, in discussion, I think we have all three of our facility members here. If we have questions at all, Janelle, or?
No questions.
Okay.
I have a question that, then I'm just going to make it public. Someone asked about how often do the schools use other facilities to work out? I don't know if we know the answer. And will this cut down the cost of them having to go to other facilities to work out?
Right. I know we used to have contracts with other fitness centers that kids could use through a PE program at both West and East. But I don't know if that, if they're still doing that because we have totally upgraded, you know, our weight rooms at both facilities and training centers. So I would think those numbers have minimized. But it'd be interesting to find that out.
I don't know very much about it. I don't, but it doesn't mean that it exists, I don't.
Yeah. We could check with the PE instructors at both East and West.
Well, I think a lot of it now, let's, there's, you know, we, strength and conditioning, you know, was offered, where it wasn't always offered. And that's, you know, that adds more time that students can get in. And there's, there's a lot of stuff that gets used after hours, too. So, so I, I would assume that's a pretty small.
Right. I think these upgrades will be great for both East and West. I mean, they are definitely needed, you know, especially the years that we haven't had it, so.
Yeah. I took a cursory look at the specific equipment. It, it seems like a pretty balanced package. And the quality of the equipment seemed pretty good, as well as the specific, the specific flooring. So, yeah, I think it's, it's a, it's a good deal.
And it looks like it'll happen this summer, which is great if we can get the equipment that quick because a lot of times, there's been a backlog. So, and also, one thing I did notice that I really appreciated was the bidding for East and West together, so that that made it even cheaper. You know, so that, that's an excellent collaboration, I think. All right. All in favor of approving the cardio equipment for East and West? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Next item is Item L, and that's on page 60, which is the SBRC Modified Allowable Growth Request for Environmental Hazard Removal. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the appearance at the School Budget Review Committee to request modified allowable growth of $118,675.75 for the costs associated with environmental projects. And this, that this increased allowable growth may be funded by 2324 cash reserve levies.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion. Anyone have any questions? It's basically, we do this every year, and it's just getting the approval that we can use the dollars for these projects if necessary, up to that amount.
Just curious, why do you use the term unusual circumstances in this? Because it happens every year, right, pretty much?
And it's asbestos. Asbestos isn't that unusual. I guess that's just the wording of the statute, probably.
Assuming that you're, you counter something maybe you're not planning for in a remodel or something.
It's not part of the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think they're talking about the specific categories that qualify.
Got it.
So hazardous is one of, open, or enrollment.
Would be another. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Discrepancies is, is another one, and miscellaneous things.
I think miscellaneous, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Scientists thought asbestos was such a miracle in the early 1900s. If only they'd known how awful it was going to treat us 100 years later.
Right. Well, and it, it is when you start digging in, like we find at central, into projects. You know, when you start digging into projects, you don't know what you're going to find under the roof or under the floor. So I think this, this.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a waste. As I said before, it's the most overrated hazard in the history of the world. But it's, it's.
Thanks, Lyle.
Well, it is, if you work it wet. It's only the dust, you know. I was located at the powerhouse at John Deere, and those people actually sawed it every day to get it off the pipes before they knew, you know, and then sawed more. If you saw it dry and there's dust, and you do it every day, it's a hazard. If it's below the tile, if it's in the glue below the tile, it's, it's not hazardous at all, so.
I think it's a liability more than anything else.
Yeah, it's, it's a liability.
Yeah. So.
Some person wrote a book called Outrageous Misconduct, and, and that's where it got its reputation. Johns Manville was the company at the time, they went broke. But we're all spending money because of that.
Right. Okay, all in favor of, of approving the SBRC money to potentially be used from the 2324 cash reserve levies? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. And our last exhibit item is Exhibit M. And this is a board policy change, the second reading. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the board approve the following policy, gifts to the district.
Second.
Thank you, and we'll defer to Ms. Arndorfer.
Thank you. Okay, so we presented this for first reading at the last board meeting. Essentially, what we're doing is adding the section on crowdfunding. And then also, just kind of outlining some of the steps and guidelines around sources that can be used. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer, or we can find out from Michael.
I think the changes are, were made, and I think it reads well. And I think it's an ad, a much-needed ad that we really needed a little bit more policy and regulation and control over that. So I appreciate that being addressed.
So this, is this section from the state, is it a general recommended? Okay.
Yeah. Because I think districts, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Statewide or, or, and plus nationwide have the same issues, so. All right. So I'm hearing no dissension on that. So all in favor of approving the policy, gifts to the district? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. So next on our agenda is our superintendent's report.
All right, I got three, three things from last week that were kind of highlights of the week. First and foremost, it was National School Counselor Week last week. And it was a full week of different ways to show gratitude towards our, towards our counseling staff. Lunch was delivered to our counseling staff on Monday. Some personalized cookies that looked really awesome were delivered as well. And then Friday culminated with a, with a breakfast brunch for the, for the team at the WCC. So just really appreciate, I, I sent a message to our counselors as well, just, you know, what they've been asked to do post-pandemic era has been quite remarkable. And so we just really want to make sure that we, they realize how much of an impact they're making on the students in our district. Second, I had a chance to go and visit the Vision to Learn Program at Becker last week. I remembered the, oh, gosh, I'm forgetting her name right now. But a couple of months ago, we came and approved the, yeah, the glasses for the students. And, you know, at the time, I was like, that's a cool project. But actually having a chance to go and sit there with the students as they got their glasses, they got, we just took some fun pictures together, made it a real cool event. 100-plus students at Becker received free glasses. And then district-wide, we've got 400 students plus. And we talked about, I believe we were talking about glasses before the, the meeting here, so how ironic. And I even, in speaking with some of the, some of the people who were there, we'd love to expand the program, too. So, so the Vision to Learn Program, they're actually actively looking for more sponsors. And I think we'd be more than happy to serve more kids if possible, so. What's that? Corinne Kroger, yes. I shouldn't remember. Yes, good job, good memory. So no, it was really cool. I mean, if you ever, I'll have to let you guys know next time we do that because it's so fun to go and sit, I mean, the kids.
They had sent us.
Okay, okay, cool. No, go and check it out. The kids are super excited. We, you know, and I'll be the first to admit sometimes, I'm a little like self-conscious when I, I don't remind very often. But the kids, you know, they, they just seem really happy and just really ecstatic. You could just see their expressions. Because they have to pick the colors, too, and the frames. And so it was really cool, really cool. Third thing was last Friday, we took a picture. We got a grant from the Waterloo Schools Foundation for their Coaches Academy for $22,000. And again, like coming from a district not knowing, you know, I think sometimes we take our programs for granted that we have going. Like the Coaches Academy, I had no clue that was going, what was going on. But the amount of professional development, experts that we bring in to work with our coaches, the high expectations we have for them, something to be, really be proud of. So we really, we brought down Dan and Laura Lee down to the main office. We took a picture with Hannah from the foundation, just to really promote, promote that event. So again, that was a $22,000 grant through the Waterloo Schools Foundation for the Coaches Academy. So those are three things from last week that were just really like, wow, we're doing some cool things here. Sometimes there's a tendency to focus, like, oh, we should be doing, you know, this should be better, and why, you know, can we get this running at a higher level? But man, really, really thinking about, we do have some really cool projects going on that we're fortunate to have, so.
All right, thank you. We'll start with Lyle tonight, his board comments.
Nothing additional, no.
Janelle?
Thanks to the band orchestra and choir teachers who have been spending weekends taking their students to honor bands, honor orchestras, and honor choruses around the state so that they can perform with best students around the state and get that experience. It's a big job to, to have to do that, take time away from their own families, both the kids and the directors. But thank you for doing that to the directors. Thank you to all of the sponsors, like the ones we had here tonight, who give up so much time and energy planning and taking kids to experiences around the country. It's not in our contracts, I know, but it is such a return for the kids when you take time to plan and do that. And I hope it's very rewarding for you as teachers, too. So thanks to everybody who does stuff like that.
For sure. India?
I just wanted to piggyback on that. So a couple of weeks ago, we had the Waterloo West Dance Team, and they were able to go to Orlando, Florida on the dime of a great organization to dance in the Nationals. And I just wanted to give a shout out because they did a really fantastic job. And I really hope they do come back as a team to come and tell us. But they sound like they did a fantastic job. So I just wanted to recognize that opportunity. Again, their coaches taking the time out to fly out, giving this new opportunity for a lot of kids who may have never flew before, as we spoke earlier, and, and have that experience. And so, good job, West High Dance Team, that's it.
Okay. And Jesse?
All right, well, congratulations out to our, we had five boy wrestlers qualify for state tournament this week, so three at East, two at West. And then also, congratulations to our freed ladies who competed at the first sanctioned girls state wrestling tournament. Not the first one, but the first sanctioned one. So, you know, it's a tough field to meet. So they're going to get a real big experience here this coming week. And I wish them all the best of luck in it, so.
Awesome. Thank you for all your work with the tournament, too, that week.
The MVC, yes. Definitely a shout out to, there to Tom and at West, and Dan, and everybody. Matt has some of his people who are working the IT portion of it, the builder host, all 15 MVC schools there. So for the most part, went pretty well.
Yes, I heard that. So thank you for your work, too.
Yep.
And tonight, I just wanted to look at some upcoming dates that we have. Conferences are next week. So encourage you to get to the conferences with your students. It's critical, as we talk about the staff. The staff does a lot of time preparing for conferences, and they would like to tell you how your student is doing. So they are the 21st and the 23rd, and that's for PK all the way to 12th grade. So, and then there'll be no school on the 23rd and 24th. So your student will be rewarded after their conferences. Our next board meeting will be February 27th. And I just wanted to make a note that we have canceled the March 13th board meeting during spring break so that people could enjoy time with their families on the break. And if indeed, we would have something pending or immediate in this time break between the two meetings, we can call a special meeting. So we would have that ability to do that. And then lastly, spring break will be March 13th through the 17th. So no school that week, and lots of, hopefully, we have this kind of weather, and you can be outside and won't have to make snowmen. So anyway, with that said, this evening, I think everyone here tonight, Esther and Stacy, I wish them both well. I think they were a little under the weather. So with that said, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. We are adjourned.